The Finance Committee calls to order at six thirty P M.
The Select Board calls this meeting to order at six thirty P M.
And the School Committee is called to order at six thirty P M.
Uh, in keeping with policy, uh, for the School Committee and for the Select Board, uh, is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak tonight? Hearing none. I'll send this over to you, Steve.
Good evening, thank you. Um, we're here tonight to talk about the financials, uh, behind the health insurance deficit. I've been working with the town accountant and we've been able to pull together some, uh, scenarios to fund the deficit. And I've also been working with department heads to identify areas where we can, um, transfer money out of existing budgets into the deficit on the town side. Um, so I'm gonna go over this briefly and then I'll turn it over to the town accountant for a little bit more of a detailed, um, explanation. Previously, we agreed that we would look at a sixty forty split with sixty percent of the deficit coming out of the, um, stabilization fund. The other forty percent would come out of budget reductions or transfers, both on the school side and the town side. This would equate to the town needing to find ninety-six thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents. And the school's looking for two hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred and forty dollars and eighty cents. And it would be a reduction of five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars and eighty-four cents from stabilization. So this is on the handout that was on the desk in front of you tonight. Um, it's the second column from the left, it's the health insurance funding scenarios summary. If we were to utilize this approach, we would have a three-year payback to the stabilization fund of a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-nine cents. I know at the last meeting, we also had a conversation about using some O P E B money. The town accountant did confirm that that is a possibility, that we could use some O P E B money for retiree benefits. I spoke to the D L S late last week, um, the Department of Local Services, about that scenario and they advised that we should probably leave O P E B alone for now. Um, we have been slowly growing that account. And that would look like more of a red flag than, uh, if we just focused exclusively on the stabilization account. Are there any questions so far? Okay, so.
I have a question. Um, I might have jumped ahead too far, but the two sixty-two and the ninety-six thousand, how is that broken up percentage-wise between town and school? What are the percentages?
If you look at the top right of the sheet, it's twenty-seven seventy-three. And that's based on the cost, um, the monthly cost for the schools and the town. Yes.
So moving on to proposal number two. Um, the town accountant was able to identify some additional funding sources. Um, our Board of Assessors overlay account has been growing. And they released a hundred thousand dollars of that money to go back into the, the town budget. Ordinarily, this would be used, uh, or go into free cash, uh, but we are proposing that we transfer that money. We also had a surplus in our property and casualty insurance this year of approximately a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So we are also proposing to use that. So in proposal two, what you will find is, um, at the bottom of, uh, about, about two-thirds of the way down the column, you'll see two hundred and ten thousand dollars in there. That would be a reduction to what we need to find. And it's a, um, town meeting transfer. Town meeting action is still required. In scenario two, the entire two hundred and ten thousand is being allocated to the deficit first. Similarly, with proposal three, we have another two hundred and ten thousand. But in this case, the funds are being applied entirely to offset budget cuts. In proposal four, we're proposing to offset the impacts to the stabilization fund. In proposal five, we are proposing a fifty-fifty. Half from, uh, being applied to stabilization and half being applied to the budget cuts.
Steve, can you back up to proposal three? What are we doing there? I, I understand the two-ten, but then what?
I'll, I'll answer since I did the numbers. Um, what we did was we took that two hundred and ten thousand off the entire amount that had to be cut from town and schools in the original scenario. So we split that two-ten, twenty-seven seventy-three. And that's how we arrived at the town cuts and school cuts at those numbers.
What are you doing in proposal number two that's different from three to get the town and the schools at different numbers? I'm still not getting that.
So in proposal number two, we took the two hundred and ten thousand right off the top. So the eight ninety-seven turns into six eighty-seven.
Oh, me three again?
Number three, we would take, we took the two-ten off the forty percent of cuts.
So we, today, I spoke to the chair of the Finance Committee. And we do have another piece of information that I'll let her share, which may also impact these numbers.
So the Fin- So the Finance Committee has a hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually that we have as a discretionary reserve fund that is normally used for unforeseen incidences that arise, um, that we cannot otherwise predict. I would say this falls into that category for the most part. Um, while I think we'd probably want to start out conservatively because we don't know what's coming down the pike even more so with the insurance trust itself. Right now, if we were to maybe take fifty or sixty of that one hundred and fifty and use it to offset some of the costs, um, maybe not taking as much out of stabilization, maybe, um, depending on the cuts to the town and the school, how they've been able to go through and redline certain things, what will be needed there? I don't know. I think at this point, it is a crisis. And so I just want everyone to be aware that the Finance Committee does have those funds within its purview to, um, offer up for circumstances just like this. I don't think it would be a good idea to want to use them all because that leaves us bare bones come spring or fall and a big piece of equipment, whether it be school or town or whatever, you know, all of a sudden needs to be replaced. Or, you know, anywhere between fifty and seventy-five thousand of that, um, would probab- how much do we have left last year of the hundred and fifty thousand, Jill? Do you know? I don't know. The majority of it, thirty? Oh, we did have some big expenses, so we did maybe thirty. So, you know, again, I would propose fifty, seventy-five from that fund. I don't have an opinion or a conclusion as to how or where it should be applied, whether it be to, uh, reduce the use from stabilization or to reduce the cuts on the town and the school side. I'm actually, maybe I'm gonna give you today what's wrong with me. Maybe we use it to reduce the cuts on the town and the school side. I might not ever say that again till everybody record this meeting.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Just a second. I mean, I, I agree. I think though that we should wait to see, like, that could be our, our very last ditch effort money. I mean, that is for emergencies. And so while I agree if it's not used for other emergencies, this would be the perfect opportunity. But I just hate to have other emergencies come up that I can't fund.
Does anyone else on the Finance Committee have an opinion on that?
Um, yeah, or just to add, um, would it make sense to, you know, mark whatever is left to, from, from this fiscal year to pay back the stabilization fund, uh, so that future budgets won't be impacted um, with the, with the one-seventy-nine or the one-thirty-seven, um, payback?
The Finance Committee Reserve Fund, anything that is remaining gets rolled into free cash, which then percentage-wise goes out to the budgets or the stabilization or what have you. It becomes part of that pot of money.
I, ju- just, it would, it would be doing primarily the same thing. Um, it just wouldn't apply the, the, of the Finance Committee for, for this fiscal year in case that money is needed for something else. But, you know, if it is, then it is. But if it's not, I think that'd be a good.
I will say in prior years, the Finance Committee usually had about a thirty thousand dollar reserve. Uh, we never really had to exceed that. Last year was the first year, wasn't it the first year last year? Last year was the first year we enacted the hundred and fifty thousand. Um, we did have a couple of larger ones. Um, the fire, that involved fire, but that was unusual historically. I'm gonna say we've never made, exceeded that thirty thousand, um, for as long as I can remember.
Just to clarify how that would, just to clarify how that would work. The, any money that was left over in the reserve fund would flow into free cash, as was already said. Um, we would need to earmark, um, specific out of free cash and set it aside before we divided out everything, you know, the rest of it. So it's possible. We just need to make a commitment as to what we're gonna do.
Does anyone on the slide forward want to speak on everything you've heard so far?
I guess I would just like to see where the cuts are coming from, if, just to see the impact of that first.
Thanks, John. That's where I was gonna go next. I think, um, before we decide on how to allocate the two hundred and ten thousand and whether or not to take money out of the reserve, um, fund, we should, we should probably talk a little bit about that. Um, so on your desktop, there is a budget reduction detail. Um, I'm proposing about nineteen thousand, three hundred out of the police department budget for, um, station coverage on the desk and radio repair line item. Recreation apartment, um, fifteen thousand dollar reduction. Uh, I talked to the recreation director today and we think we can move that into the revolving account. I have, um, twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars coming out of the D P W for tree removal road patch and a delay of hiring a, a employee until the beginning of November. Fire department wages, fifteen thousand dollars, um, that's wages and physicals. Lakes expenses, uh, that's their full budget of fourteen thousand dollars this year. And library and senior center taking twen- two thousand, five hundred out of each, um, budget, um, respectively, as you'll see there. So the total there is ninety-six thousand, four hundred and fifty. And I don't know if, um, the school superintendent brought a preview or could comment a little bit on his reductions.
Yes, cool question. Oh, they're pressing that around. Um, the pool is, does this include closing the pool? Or use, or you think you have everything in the revolving funds to operate it?
At the time, we think we have available funds in the revolving account. We would have to look at a fee increase down the road if we started to see those numbers drop.
You want me up to do it, or? So, um, I presented to the School Committee a couple of weeks ago. Um, you know, I was asked to do the sixty, forty, fifty, fifty. Um, so new hires, um, we were able to save some money there. We got some new teachers that came in at a lower rate. Um, we also did one-year positions, so we're not gonna get teachers that are, have a lot of experience to apply, knowing that those positions will be done at the end of the year. Um, unemployment, we were able to reduce because of the override at the one point six. The grant, we rew- we rewrote a grant, so we don't have to pay for benefits. Um, so that was able to save us fourteen thousand. Maintenance is eighteen thousand. That's just kicking the can down the road. Those are projects that we continue to kick down the road. Um, some of it is replacing the asbestos in the floors and things of that nature. You know, it's fine right now, but once you start breaking it up, you gotta do the repairs. Uh, the fifty percent, same thing. We added technology there. Um, that's sixty-five thousand as of there. Um, so once again, we're just kicking, kicking the can down the road. Laptops for students, yep. Yeah, they're all about to go out of, um, lifespan. Correct. So. Yeah, so we're doing a five-year rotation, um, so.
With the maintenance, the asbestos, is that like cold spring tiles or is that like Javish brook?
It's all schools. And I just wanna remind everybody, just because it's my due diligence to do so. We already reduced the I T director. I don't have an I T director. We reduced the bus. We had the sped tuitions that we were lucky to do. Um, and I, I remember Nicole saying that's luck. Well, our luck has run out because we have a new student that we have to pick up for another dish for cost. Uh, we got rid of a French teacher. We reduced the food service director to point eight. And we got rid of a C S S teacher, so that, this is on top of those cuts already.
I'm concerned about the maintenance piece because that's just gonna jump the price. It, it, I mean, it's, it's like delaying going to the dentist. It's just gonna get worse.
You know, I've been very clear that we've cut and cut and cut, that, you know, it's either people or kicking things down the road.
You know, looking at this spreadsheet, the least impacts to our existing budget would be proposal three. Um, I think a middle-of-the-road approach would be proposal five. And both of those, again, are outside of any additional money coming from the reserve fund.
If the Finance Committee did kick in like fifty thousand, would that address the maintenance piece?
Well, there's a lot of projects that it's made up of and we continued to push it off and off and off. So this one was about replacing tiles. You know, we're reducing. Correct. 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 It can be any school. I mean, we were just talking about it and, um, all schools have it basically. So I can tell you that it's gonna be chestnut, but if something happens, then we might have to push Javish off and have chestnut to it.
But that's such a small amount. I don't know how that could remediate hardly anything more than like a twelve-by-twelve area.
Because I've already come up with the rest of it through unemployment, which was a blessing to have that, and the new hires. I mean, that's money that's.
So combined those resources, you wouldn't have been able to do a much larger abatement area?
Correct.
Okay, I get it.
No, no, I just wanna, I know what you're saying, yes, but.
It was the sum total of that that would have been deflected towards the asbestos removal on a larger scale, regardless of which school. But now that we're getting granular, you're saying, okay, this is what I took from these particular line items that we're not gonna move forward with at this time, just slowly speeds and.
Correct. So if we didn't have the new hires or the unemployment ma- maintenance and technology would be a lot more. And I can tell you exactly what rooms it would be or where, what schools. Um, but honestly, to me, it really doesn't matter what school it is or, you know, because they're in the same situation, you know, whether it's Chestnut Hill or Javish. You know, what's it matter, I guess, is the question, where it's coming from. I can understand if it was Cold Springs or having, uh, a conversation about flows in Cold Springs. And that's just a question. I'm just kind of trying to understand, like, where is it actually coming from? You know? Would that make a difference in you deciding something?
No, I just thought that eighteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars for the remediation of asbestos seemed extremely low and maybe would get you like a, you know, ten by ten square foot, if you're lucky.
Exactly.
Steve, I'm assuming none of the asbestos in question that you're looking to remediate is anything that's broken or chipped or anything right now? It's fully encompassed? You could even cover it if you needed to for a, um, quick fix? Or there's no harm, no foul at this time?
Sure. It's like the capital improvement plan that we put in every year. If we don't get capital improvement money, then we can't do anything with it. So it just kicks it down. The next year, we hope that, you know, we get it that year. And if we don't, we kick it down till the next year. So.
So flipping over to the town one.
Um, I just have a question. Do you know what the total cost of the asbestos removal would be?
No, I don't have that tonight. Correct. Once again, my job was to come up with the two hundred and sixty-two. And I, I believe it's my, uh, Steve or Brian, you might know, I believe it's one of the capital improvement plans too. So, and that's been on there probably the last five years since I've been here.
I just wanna flip over to the town side. Uh, um, I have concerns, um, especially about, um, civilian pay, uh, like for instance, the twenty-five-hundred, uh, stipend for drivers. Um, that's Meals on Wheels, I'm assuming, and, um, help visits and that kind of thing.
That is correct. It's Meals on Wheels. And in speaking with the director, she believes that she can tolerate the twenty-five-hundred dollar cut and possibly utilize some grant money for it.
Does that mean that, uh, the Meals on Wheels service would be compromised because we're not offering stipends?
No, it does not mean that. It will not be compromised just because of the lack of stipends.
And what about the lakes expense? If you wipe out the whole budget, how does that affect the lakes?
Their maintenance plans will have to put on hold for a year.
Okay, so it's maintenance. Isn't that normally what they use to put the treatment to keep the weeds at bay? So if they go twelve months without it, it's not gonna be anything nearly as, um, horrible as it would be if it was a two or three years plus down the road, right?
Yeah, in my opinion, a year would be tolerable. If we were to delay for three or five years, then we would have some real issues. But again, we have, um, two hundred and ten thousand on the table. Depending on how we split that up, we can start looking at putting some of these line items back in. I don't think I would fund any one over the other. I would proportion it and start putting money back into each budget. And I also wanna mention that if we did add another fifty thousand from reserve fund, that would put thirty-six thousand, five hundred back into the school budget and thirteen thousand, five hundred back into the town budget, which is an additional chunk.
And by that, you're not wrong about the Finance Committee. And we all know I don't offer up free money often. I'm very keen on that, Lori.
So I, um, appreciate the concerns that the boards, the various boards have had about expenses as well as the, the health of our stabilization fund. And I know that we keep a stabilization fund for emergencies just like this. Um, and I too wanna limit the impacts. Um, so if I had to make a recommendation tonight to move this conversation along, I would suggest we use a fifty-fifty. Half to cover the deficit and half to cover, uh, what we withdraw from the stabilization fund. And then we can certainly talk about an additional fifty thousand from the reserve fund.
Having had talked.
I can agree to that.
Can I ask Steve if, that's the plane we're going with, which proposal is that on this paper? Five, okay.
Yeah, that'd be proposal number five.
All right, so can I throw something out there that I never throw out? The first three things on our list, um, of the new hires, the unemployment and the grant, are savings that are already there, so the schools could potentially just contribute that amount to help the town out.
She doesn't normally say that, Lori, so.
You and I are gonna have, you and I are gonna have to figure out what's going on with ourselves, Heidi.
I ate dinner before I came, maybe that's why.
The, I think that it took me a minute to digest the severity of what's going on. And if anyone watched prior meetings, they might have seen my complete and utter frustration with, um, being sidelined or, you know, have this, I can't talk about it. But now that I've generally digested it, how do we move forward with the least amount of impact to our residents and our students and our schools and our town employees and everybody else? Um, we're still gonna have this as an issue for some time to come. But I agree with like Heidi or, you know, and my, what I'm saying and I don't know about anybody else, but we have to just work together to get through this next year until we can figure out what we can do to mitigate some of these expenses and get ourselves in a better place. until we can figure out what we can do to mitigate some of these expenses and get ourselves in a better place. So I'm looking at what we would, first of all, I agree with you. And I, I love how we're all working together. It's just amazing and awesome and I'm proud to be a part of this. Um, I'm, I'm looking at what the payback is and wondering. I know we made this commitment that we would, that we would put this money back within the next three years. Does the, are the amounts significantly different in terms of how heavy a lift, uh, we're proposing we're going to make? Or is it, is it kind of relative? When I, when I look at a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, almost a hundred, a hundred and eighty thousand, to me, that seems like a lot. Uh, and so when I look at proposal four, now we're talking just, you know, a hundred and nine thousand. So it's really, it's what, you know, what, what's the gamble we all feel comfortable with? I, I mean, I like proposal five because it's fifty-fifty, but in terms of the stabilization payback, is it going to be a significant lift?
So ju- just, just to add, um, just so everybody knows, I, I looked back in the capital planning. I just happen to have them here. Um, partial was from the schools in, in the five-year, um, capital plan that they submitted between twenty fiscal years, twenty-five and twenty-nine. It's, uh, two hundred and five thousand. Ninety thousand of that is a Cold Springs school. Um, so it's, 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 it's a significant amount. And, um, to your point, if we make the, the burden as little as possible, they can, they can still perform that work without having to reach out for reserve fund money or something.
Um, I, I just want to better understand what Heidi said a minute ago. So you, correct me if I'm understanding this incorrectly, but between new hires, unemployment and the grants, you had said that that was money that the schools were going to save anyway. So are you saying that, assuming this first example with the sixty-forty, are you saying that you would only need eighteen thousand one hundred and ninety-two from whatever proposal we go with? In other words, you don't want to be reimbursed for the items above that you are already saving on?
What I'm saying is if we go with like proposal five, which calls for the schools to reduce one eighty-five, eight ninety, we could reduce two forty-four, three forty-nine. So if that meant taking less from stabilization or if that meant, like, I, I guess you all could decide how to, how, how to deal with that excess. But that's what I'm telling you, the schools can offer up to the town without any damage.
I did the quick math. If we add the fifty thousand from civilization, it would be three twenty-five, twenty-seven, sixty-four from civilization. Five with Heidi's number in the fifty would be three twenty-five, twenty-seven and sixty-four cents from civilization.
Is it gonna be much more digestible to get back over a three-year period? Even if free cash goes down, if we do something like that, like the fifty-fifty, but adjust for the, um, finance reserve and the schools additional funds and then that leaves a much less little burden to return the stabilization funds over a three-year period.
Can I just say, as a committee, we didn't talk about that. That was just something I came up with here. So if we're gonna move forward, I would like to talk about it here.
Just for clarification, can I ask a question? So I want to make sure I understand this. So paying back the stabilization fund would be through certified free cash over three years. That's the proposal. And so that would come off the top and what remains would still be split, the seventy-thirty split.
Okay. Is that correct? That's what I understand.
I need the. What, what was, I'm sorry, what was the question?
It was a clarification question for myself. So, um, whatever we take from stabilization, the plan would be to pay it back over three years and that payback would come from certified free cash. So then would we take that off the top of the remainder that would then still be split?
It, it's my opinion that that would be the way to do it. We'd kick it off the top before we split everything.
I, I need to, I need to ask this again. I'm still not getting it. So when I add the new hires to the unemployment to the grant, that's two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Are you saying if we were to go with proposal number five, instead of us needing four hundred and thirty-three thousand for stabilization, we would only need one hundred and eighty-nine thousand for stabilization?
We would need three hundred and twenty-five thousand and twenty-seven, but sixty-four cents and then we'd pay back, divide that by three and that would be your payback for a year.
Do the math with me, John, on how you got to that stabilization amount.
So it's two forty-four, thir- three forty-nine.
What's that from?
That's from new hires, unemployment and grant. Two ten from general insurance and overlay surplus. So you're up to four fifty-four, three forty-nine. There you go. Fifty thousand from civilization. Or from, not civilization, from a reserve account. So you're five oh four, three forty-nine. The town's responsible for sixty-eight thousand ninety-nine and seventy-six cents. You're at five seventy-two, four forty-eight, seventy-six, and the remainder would come from civilization. The remainder's three twenty-five, twenty-seven and sixty-four cents.
Does anyone have, um, a different scenario that they like better of the five proposals? Or do you have a, a sixth one that hasn't been proposed, just to kind of talk through what we think might be best?
Before we do that, can I just make sure my committee's okay with what I said, taking off?
Yeah, one, one, the payback is a hundred and eight thousand three hundred and forty-four, fifty-four over three years. So it's less money.
No, I totally get that. I just, I said that without checking with the committee first. So I just want to make sure these guys are okay with that.
I'm trying to wrap my head around this big picture. So health insurance is permanently going up. These cuts are adjusting our budget so that we can essentially afford this moving forward, so that we're living within a budget that can pay this health insurance in the future, assuming increases that are more typical. So we, I guess I kind of get the feeling like we need to get used to these kind of cuts sooner than later. And I just want to make sure that we thought through the seventy-thirty split, it coming off the top. Is that gonna impact the schools equitably? Or is that going to kind of hit the schools a little bit harder because the budget is, we, because the school budget is so much of the town budget. I haven't had a chance to really think through it, but those are my questions.
So I, I want to be clear about the first question. When Mr. Shea paid us a visit, he told us that the town should be prepared to come up with a contingency plan. He did not give us any reassurance that this was going to happen, that, that this was a one-off. We don't know what's gonna happen with health insurance. We, we really don't. So it could be better, it could be worse. Uh, from what I've read, it's probably gonna go worse. It's probably gonna be worse. But I'm not an expert in this and it's just what I've been reading in terms of health insurance. We, so we don't know. This is a, like a, a best faith effort. And I, I can't speak to the second question. Maybe someone else can.
I, I can, maybe Jill can speak better, but I'm looking at it as we just gotta get through this year's budget and close it in gap. And we haven't even talked about next year's budget yet. We don't know what that forecast is gonna be like. So I'm not even thinking about that. I'm just wanna close out this year's budget.
Well, that may be true, but at the same time, to your point, we really don't, we don't know what's gonna happen with health insurance. And we don't even know if we're gonna be with the same carrier, you know? I mean, they, they've talked about dissolving. So, um, John's right. We just have to get through this year. That's true. Uh, but we should all keep our, you know, eyes open and we may have to, I mean, I hope it's better, but I, I'm not particularly optimistic. I don't know. Flora, you have anything you want to add?
I think it, I think it's probably gonna get worse before it gets better, but at least we have enough information now and we know enough to pay attention to things we might have thought were being handled previously by the appropriate people when it turns out they in fact were not handling them appropriately. So now, um, shame on us if you don't pay attention and if you don't granularly look at things and look at all our options and really consider what will be best for the town as a whole. All of that said, those are all future high-level things that will happen. But right now, we have got to close the gap and I am all for savings. I'm a fiscal conservative, you know, whatever, love, maybe eight percent net stabilization account, still not big enough for me, but it is raining and we do need cover and we need to get through this year. So even somebody as conservative as me, what can we do to make the least amount of impact on our students, our residents, our teachers, their health insurance, everything else to get through this next year? Although I do have to, um, have the finance committee officially vote. They agree with me on the fifty thousand dollars, um, to go forward, but I think it's best served if we all work collaboratively and collectively together and then really grind towards the future and what we can do to mitigate this from happening again as fast as we possibly can.
So, um, yeah, I agree and we have to get through this, but I think to Jake's point, at least for me, when he said that, I go back to when we prepared our budget last year and we were at eight point nine percent increase or eight point seven and everybody was like, I can't believe you're coming in at that. The majority of that was health insurance. So once again, this year, we're gonna have that issue. You know, so I think to his point is we gotta fix it now, but what happens when I present my budget with the schools', um, insurance and the town, and then we have this big deficit again? You know, what are we gonna do? I hope we work collaborative together like we are tonight because that's gonna be a huge hit for the schools, just, you know? And, and I'm sure it will be from the town. But I think solving it now is great, but we also have to look at what's coming up next year. Um, because I, I, we heard a lot of that was, you know, the budget's so high. Well, that was health insurance.
But the problem is, we don't know what's gonna happen next year. That, that's the thing. I, I mean, I, I think one thing we learned about all this is this is nothing that, uh, that, that we can just say, okay, the experts are working on it. Like, we do need to be involved. And I think this was a big wake-up call and I think we're all gonna be watching it. But honestly, until the facts come down the pipe, I'm not sure how we plan for it.
I guess, and someone correct me if I'm wrong. If I prepared a budget that had health insurance at eight hundred thousand, the first round, and now it's another six hundred thousand, ain't I coming in next year at almost a million dollars short? But I think that's a reality that we need to kind of face, you know, too. I'm not disagreeing with you. I hear you, but, and maybe I'm looking at it wrong, but we're already behind.
Could, so the, the way that it pays back, I think you said Jill could explain that? That was the one part that I was wondering is if we've got this seventy-thirty split and the schools do two forty-four, when next year rolls around and we're figuring out how much to pay back. I guess I'm just wondering, if the schools have kind of cut everything they could, are they a little bit closer to living within the budget that they need to, to pay for their portion of health insurance? And the town has kind of a little bit longer of a runway to get used to that. Is that what's happening or do I misunderstand?
So we're at about one oh six for, one oh eight for, um, payback. In, in my mind, and maybe somebody else has a different thought, in my mind, that comes off the top of free cash before it gets split um, as part of the budget. So free cash is, is a, an available source for budgets. We have split, a split that we've been doing this, this year was sixty-forty, so sixty percent went into the budget. Forty percent was split off into capital and, uh, stabilization and OPEB. We're talking about, I've heard talk about next year, we would stay the same just because of where we are with this budget. And so before we, before we did the sixty percent as a total for, toward the overall budget, everybody's, all of us, um, that hundred and eight would be taken off.
I guess my only, and it's probably a conversation for later, and I hope that these tri-board meetings happen more often because I have other questions about like budgets and timelines and when different things get discussed, but, health insurance is gonna hit schools way harder. We have more personnel. And so certain things that go up in price are gonna hit different departments in different years harder. And I think we might need to have a conversation that's a little bit longer about how do we make sure that this is equitable and fair to make sure kids have what they need, teachers have stability so that they stay and the town has what they need. Um, so I, I guess it, it sounds like maybe for our next tri-board meeting, talking through some longer-term plans and when certain conversations happen budget-wise and percentage-wise, seventy-thirty, or is there a different way to have a more equitable solution?
Are you talking about, um, making sure that it's a seventy-thirty, um, split with the hundred and nine thousand? Is that what you're saying?
A little bit, but it makes me think of bigger picture. Health insurance is, is skyrocketing. And because we have so many employees, I feel like we might need to have a more complicated solution than simple percentages seventy-thirty so that we make sure everyone has what they need long-term as opposed to percentage splits.
The seventy-three twenty-seven split that you see here on the sheet is actual cost. It's not an arbitrary number. The school department currently uses seventy-three percent of our health insurance.
One thing you, one thing that, one thing you talked about a long-term proposal for this. Uh, the, the trust that is handling this is going through severe cash flow problems. If you looked at their minutes, they're saying that for the rest of the fiscal year, they need twenty to twenty-five million dollars to survive. If they don't get this, they could go into receivership. So all this, we are deciding today on today's numbers. But that doesn't mean it's not gonna change a week, a month, two months from now. We may be back here trying to figure out what's going on and have a contingency plan for the health, health insurance. So today, I think we're trying to remedy and put a Band-Aid on the gash. We don't know if it's gonna stop the bleeding.
So can I, um, I have two comments, um, just to kind of bring it back to this conversation. So I think I heard that, you know, our free cash policy that we put into place where we were going to sort of wean ourselves off of free cash. I just want to confirm that for fiscal year twenty-seven, we are not going to the forty percent, but we're, I think I heard Jill say, but is there, I mean, is that something we can vote on so that when we come around to it for budgeting season, that we are all on the same page?
And the slack board agreed to it as well. And the slack board agreed to it as well.
The tri-board meeting.
I just didn't know if that was something we all voted on. So I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page. And then, you know, any payback to the stabilization that's gonna come out of the budget from free cash is going to affect everybody. So I think the proposal that John talked about where if we vote and agree to give the money that we have already realized in savings, that the 108, 3, I think 342 would have the least impact on everyone's budget in the coming year.
Are you talking about proposal five?
Well, yes, it's sort of a modified proposal five. If the school committee agrees to put forward the savings that we've already realized minus the maintenance lines.
Just to be clear, that 108, 342 includes the 58,000 additional in cuts that you have realized in and may put forth as well as the 50,000 that this finance committee hasn't voted on yet, but has talked about. And both of those numbers would come directly off of the stabilization based on the 108.
Is there anything on the town side that we can look at, Steve, or is that 68,000 firm? I'm just trying to figure out something.
I have the same question.
The proposal that's being discussed would, would grant me another $32,000 if I got my math right. $28,000 to put back into the budget. And I would propose just reducing, what I proposed for reductions, by that, by that amount, I would just add some back in. Is that right?
You may be doing math over there, but could you say that number again?
$28,000. He put back $28,000.
So is that 68 plus $28,000? That's 96, right?
That's 108, if we went with proposal five.
So if we went with proposal five, I would still be cutting 68,099.76, which is a reduction from what you have in front of you on the spreadsheet. That totals 96,449.
I'm sorry, so my, my question may not have been John's question. My question was, can we meet somewhere in the middle? Is there any wiggle room to get somewhere between 96 and 68? Seeing, of course, that I don't wanna cut many of these services either, but if we can try and take a little bit more.
Just to, to go over what we're, what we've proposed, they're, they're not actual savings that we have on hand per se, so they are cuts. With that, give us a number and, you know, we will do what needs to be done. I guess, I guess it's a little tiny bit different situation just because you had unexpected, you know? So I'm not, I'm not sure what, I, I guess whatever the vote is, we'll take care of.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah, I think from my perspective, I would take the money and I would proportionate out to each department. So, you know, based on a rough percentage with the police department, rec department, DPW, fire department, lakes and libraries and senior center, I would, I would factor that into a percentage basis and just add that money back into the budget.
I'm gonna go back to a question I asked earlier and that is, is there anyone on the three boards that would argue for a proposal outside of proposal number five? And if so, what is your thinking?
I just wanna throw out that Lori was very generous, so maybe we go from 50 to 75 and we help everybody out.
I think since they haven't voted on it yet.
Nor have we.
Nor have, it is raining in Belcher Town, everybody.
But it is nice that the town has come forward with 210,000. The school has come forward and say, we're saving almost a similar amount. The finance committee is coming forward hopefully and, you know, meeting somewhere where we can vote and say, all right, let's give this small piece that we can. Because I agree, it's gonna continue to get worse and worse until it gets better. But right now, we just need to plug that leak because we wanna get through this year with the least amount of impact and giving ourselves the time with microscopes and professional opinions and, you know, everything else to look at what of our options are for next year. So I think everybody, I'm pleased personally to see everybody coming and giving everything they can to try to get through this. I think that's a great start.
I think we need to, to Brian's point, consider what's gonna happen. So, so the director of the trust, the executive director at Belcher Town last week, got up and said that they have identified cost savings to the plan. I think everybody here realizes they have an extremely rich benefit package in this plan for still undervalued. It's still undervalued, going up over 40% in the past year. He identified cost savings, but he stated they are not gonna put those into effect starting in the new calendar year. They might wait to, wait to the next, start of fiscal year, which will be January 1st, 2026. So will the, will the change in a benefit package that they put forward stabilize the costs enough so that they, they don't go up considerably in the meantime? But whatever we decide here, we have to keep that in our back pocket that he's, he has an option to, to lower costs in January and it's stated he's not gonna do it. So just don't know what's gonna happen in the future. That's all.
Yeah, I, I think we're all watching this situation very closely. And today I did learn that the July numbers that the trust was dealing with, were down from the May and June spike. So we're starting to see the trend go in the right direction. I hope it continues in that, in that path. And we also know October 1, there's gonna be a change in plan for the GLP-1 drugs, which is projected to save some money. And I think a lot of this is going to evolve by the next tri-board meeting. We should have some better answers on where things are heading. This is all very fresh. We've been reacting very quickly, which is a good thing. So we can all have some assurance that our budgets are gonna be whole and that our families and our employees are gonna have health insurance because that's what's important right now.
So I'm gonna ask again, does anyone have feelings about any other proposal outside of proposal number five? And the reason why I'm asking is, is if we can at least agree on a proposal, we can move forward with maybe perhaps votes preliminary?
Brian had something to say?
Yeah.
Didn't he?
No.
I'm sorry, thought he did. Never mind.
Paige just turned.
Okay.
I have one quick question.
Rick.
I'm sorry. We were talking about the finance committee, you know, giving 50, 50,000 plus or minus, depending on who we talk to. Will that be also included with the change in the stabilization fund number that you have there?
Yes.
Yes, it will. I do wanna clarify again that that's gonna have to come out of free cash. No, it's not.
No, no, it's not free.
We're gonna do a reserve fund transfer for that.
Right, a reserve fund transfer, yes.
Never mind.
Yes, yes.
I am.
That's why we all have to vote.
Just saying, no.
So, and, and just to finish that, so it would go from 144, 495 to 108?
Correct.
Which should be an easier lift.
It's much more digestible.
Has anybody actually changed every single row under proposal five and willing to share those exact numbers with me?
I can try.
I did not do the schools piece.
I did.
Ah, how. Okay. Okay, so the town would be at 68,099.76?
And the schools would be at 244, 349.
Stable, go ahead.
244, 349.
Stabilization comes down to 325, 027, 84. And that's the 433 minus 58,458 from the school committee and 50,000 or also less 50,000 from the finance committee. All not voted, but that amount comes to 325, 027, 84. And then others stays the same. The 325,000 considers the 50,000 and the 58,000. 108, 342, 61.
108 what?
342, 62. 9 plus 25s. Divide that by 342, 61.
Does anybody in the finance committee have any questions or clarifications or anything that they'd like to say? We speak up, we speak agree.
I guess my concern is, I don't see any way this is gonna get lower, right? There, there's no way, especially with the leadership of the trust. We can all put that together. That's, that's going one way and we know which way. I guess my question would be, have we gotten with someone in this field to see how far off we are for what we should be paying for what we have?
The HR director and I have been working with a broker. We've compared rates for similar plans with other, with other insurance agencies and we are still competitive. We're not over in some areas and under in others, but it's, it's right neck and neck. So right now, it doesn't make sense to change plans. And Nicole has been working with us on this. She's an expert in the field and has been kinda watching the progression and feels the same way. At least I believe so.
Yeah, I agree. When I first looked at the rates that came through in the renewal, I was shocked because to have plans that have no deductible, just copay plans and have the rates as low as they were was shocking to me. And it kind of in the back of my head said to myself, I feel like this is really underfunded. But I figured the 18% increase at renewal was gonna cover that. I don't, I don't know that anybody saw this cliff. Like, we just, just dropped. And I didn't see anything reading through the minutes that indicated that that was gonna happen. I think that when you don't have enough in reserves put aside and when you don't have an aggregate stop-loss to protect you in the end and you get a few cancer claims, they're gonna send you right over the edge. So this is just poor planning by the trust to not have enough in reserves, aggregate stop-loss and an accounting system.
Right.
But to get a sense of what this would cost for maybe a more reliable trust, like how, what is that price difference from a place that has been adjusting their rates accordingly?
Are you talking about like the GIC?
There's the GIC, there's the Scanting Valley Trust, there's these other trusts that do the exact same thing. What I'm wondering is how much more expensive are those than this one? To get a sense of how much worse are we looking at this getting?
The reason why those plans are more expensive because maybe they do have that financial security to them. I, I don't know. I don't know the specifics of those plans.
I think that's the direction we need to go in though. I wasn't gonna say this at this meeting, but, you know, I think having stability and being able to trust in your health insurance, that, that, that's key. And so if what you've been saying all along is, should we be looking at what other health insurance plans are? And, and based on the real data, is this trust what we need to continue to stay with? Because remember, there's an 18-month drag. Is that what you were saying?
I've been, yes, I mean, I think there are places that are more reliable and there are hundreds of people who are counting us to make decisions that will keep him safe. And I just want them to know, we're thinking about, these places have had a track record that, I mean, I'm gonna trust Nicole when she looks at them and makes sure that they have all the stopgap and thing. Like, that one's a little more expensive, but they have all the things that they're supposed to have and they're 10% more expensive. Can't we withstand that in next year's budget? That's the big picture, what I'm wondering.
Rick, did you have something?
Just to let you know, the, I was going through the minutes of the trust and the GIC as of July was asking the state for $250 million for shortfall. So it's not, I mean, the trust that we're dealing with was, in my opinion, severely mismanaged. But it's not necessarily uncommon at this point. So the state is gonna bail out the GIC, but I don't think the trust has anywhere else to go. They tried banking, everybody shot them down. They talked to political officials and they said, you're too late. It's gonna be, you know, hit or miss going forward.
So I got the feeling when he was talking, he was upset that the GIC got a bailout and they didn't get a bailout? And they're like, well, the GIC ended, and maybe that's a perk of the GIC then. Like, your state wants to bail you out more, so that's helpful.
Well, that's
Exactly.
That's, that's the difference. You know, it's like, okay, yeah, they went after the state for the money. With the trust we have currently, they're gonna go after Belcher Town for the money.
The GIC. So if you made the move towards the GIC, that's fine, you are getting that stability. But I think you will probably have some unhappy members when they realize, I'm making this up, but I have a thousand dollar deductible now, whereas before I didn't have one. So there's no right answer. You're gonna pay somewhere, whether it's in the premiums or in the using of the plan.
So for what it's worth, I work in a town and I have GIC and I have a $400 deductible. Like, that's just what it is.
How GIC though, is you have a lot of different plan choices.
So just to circle back on, on things, the HR director and I have been looking at other options. One of the big hurdles that we have is the richness of our plan and having the need to have all of the bargaining units buy in to what changes we make. If we try to compare prices apples to apples, we are gonna pay significantly more. The only way we can have savings or comparable pricing is to reduce benefits to our employees and that's been a difficult thing to, to navigate. So that's where we're at right now, trying to work through that.
Uh, there's just one other thing to, to, to say about the trusts and I think everybody here knows my feelings, so I'm not gonna get into it. But in their history, they, they went through a very similar. Um, circumstance back in two thousand seventeen, it was widely publicized in the media. Um, they lost ten million dollars in two years. Um, they came back. They were able to build their, their, their reserve back up very, very, very quickly. If, if. If the member units or if, if our representatives, uh, Belcher Town's representative to the, the, the trust could, could. Really advocate for changing policies. Um, a couple of simple policy changes would avoid this from happening again. And I, I would hate to abandon the trust. They've done great. Um, uh, for the community for a very long time, for many communities for a long time. And, um, y- yes, this started in, in two thousand twenty-three and it was a, a pretty steady decline. It flattened out. A mid part of two, two thousand twenty-four, but then it, it, it went down currently, but. But if, if, if they can straighten out their income. Um, th- they can build their reserves back up, uh, fairly quickly. And in a couple of years, this, this, this will all be gone. And hopefully the next time they get in this situation, there will be a policy in place that can't be voted down. By, uh, a committee being pushed by their, by the member units to keep costs as low as possible. If, you know, if they have to go up, if, if there's gonna be a statutory increase of five percent. If this happens. Um, and, and you lose ten percent on two consecutive quarters of your, then. An automatic rate, rate in, increase goes into play and that can't be voted down. I think that would be a good thing. It, it would be difficult, but it would be a good thing for the trust.
So. I agree with you, there's a lot of wishing and hoping in there. And, uh. I, I'm gonna go back to something I said earlier. I think we're premature on this conversation. I think we need to wait until January and then have a very robust conversation about this. Tonight, we're really, it's about getting through this year, as John pointed out and others have pointed out and. And I think we're all gonna be ready to have that conversation in January, but in terms of tonight. Um, I'm assuming now at this point that everybody likes proposal number five.
I do like proposal number five. So you're saying January? And didn't he say we have to notify them by December if we were gonna look? I don't know, I like proposal five, I just don't wanna make sure we don't get stuck for something we don't want.
Actually, what? Uh, Joe Shea said. Was that he was gonna be speaking with the representatives. Um, for, you know, Senator Olivera and Aaron Saunders. And that, that would give him more, more facts to help make decisions. So really, we should be in contact with them. I don't know, is, um. Are the, are they coming to our next meeting? No, no, um, Aaron and Jake. Okay, so they'll be at our October meeting and if we have enough information, then. We should convene an emergency meeting.
Mendefal. Five is amended if we all vote and everybody agrees. Why don't we just take those votes now as our committee and then we can know if we can move forward?
That's, I was gonna suggest the same thing.
Perfect. You wanna go first or me to go first?
You can go first.
So I propose the finance committee use fifty thousand dollars of its discretionary. Funds to contribute to, um, what?
Um, health insurance.
Health insurance, town chair. And, uh, right? That's it, that's it. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I oppose. So it's five zero zero in favor. Perfect, so for the school committee, uh, I was proposing that we. Um, put forth the funds we've already realized totaling two hundred forty-four thousand, three forty-nine. Is there any discussion on this?
Yeah, we have discussion, I just wanted.
Oh, thank you. I do just want to make sure that it's everyone, for everyone's awareness, that's fifty-eight thousand, four fifty-nine. More than what was determined in proposal five.
Duly noted, the record.
Any other discussion?
What?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. So passes four, nothing.
Two forty-four. Three forty-nine, been cut through the score.
I need a motion to approve, uh, uh, the amended. Prose, proposal five. John, do you have the numbers?
I make a motion that we propose the amended option five. The town paying, cutting sixty-eight thousand ninety-nine dollars and seventy-six cents. The school cutting or contributing. Two hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-nine thousand. Forty-nine dollars, sorry. Two hundred and ten thousand coming from overlay and general insurance. Fifty thousand dollars coming from the reserve fund. From the finance committee and then three hundred and twenty-five thousand, twenty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents coming from civilization.
Do I hear a second?
Further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, we have to have a second motion to.
I make a motion that we pay back stabilization over a three-year period of a hundred and eight thousand. Three hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty-five cents over a three-year period, right off the top.
Do, do I hear, all in favor, oh, further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
So the next agenda item is to discuss the, um, setting of a special town meeting to make all these transfers. Let me get my calendar open and then we can start the conversation. I was gonna propose October twenty-seventh, Monday night, um, as the special meeting night.
I like that cause it gives, uh, it gives the community enough time. To hear about this. Finance committee, does anybody have any, um, other obligations on October twenty-seventh? None stated to works for us?
Time.
Is that okay with you guys?
Seven o'clock.
Is seven o'clock too late? Seven to eight-thirty.
To clarify, is there gonna be other warrant items on the town meeting, special meeting? Uh, we're gonna talk about that next.
I think seven would be better for to just to give people a chance to get there.
Uh, and. I'm concerned about parents and their ability to come to a seven o'clock meeting.
Are we gonna offer childcare again that was very successful at our last town meeting?
There is, except for, but I just don't see the numbers, like, gee, this is a meeting where are we gonna have for?
Radaried everybody.
Well, I. It, because we had. Programming for kids before, uh, I think we need to stay consistent. You know, um. I, I, I don't know, can you have that conversation with Kyle?
Sure, I'm not the liaison any longer, but maybe John and I can work together on that. I also, um, think what we, I would suggest, I think Kyle would suggest is registration again, so then we would know in advance who needs childcare.
All, all I wanna do is be consistent, so people know that we're continuing to do what we said we're gonna do.
Also, I was going to mention, um, in terms of quorum, I think it'd be useful to strongly encourage all committee members, all committees. To attend and that's well over seventy-five people.
Well, I'd, I'd like to see everybody come. But, um, to the parents and teachers in the room, is seven o'clock too late?
You just gotta consider bedtime, you know? If you're starting at seven and those kids are in that cafeteria till nine, that's gonna dissuade parents and families because. So you gotta start a little earlier, but then you have that sweet spot of five PM, work's done, so I, six, six-thirty was smart, I think.
I think if you planned for six-thirty, we never start on time, so by then you're starting at seven, usually.
I'm listening to you. What, as long as everyone, regardless of whether or not you have children, a job, or you're elderly or whatever, as long as we're equitable to everyone. And we are not looking at one group any more prominently than another when we put a timeout. It's gotta be completely equitable and consider everybody from youngest to oldest. I hear you. Yeah. Uh, but again, I think. I think people poop out, it's seven o'clock, okay, could I just say that?
I do, uh, I think we've talked about six and seven, how about we just go six-thirty, right?
Yeah, six, I think six-thirty is fine, but I just wanna, I know we're prominently speaking about one group and I wanna make sure that we, when we're thinking about times, we're considering everybody with whether they have a full-time job. You know, whether you're elderly, what have you, disabled, whatever, we wanna give everyone the same opportunity to attend the meeting and, um, participate. Duly noted and I certainly agree, it, and. And I'm, and I really am thinking of everyone, I started with parents because they're in the.
No, I get it, but six-thirty is not that, six-thirty is.
And I think six-thirty, but that's a little, a little better. Yes, uh, and when we originally were looking at, um, accessibility for town meeting, we had checked in with the senior center director, Jessica, and she does have shuttles available on weekday evenings. I'll have to verify with her, uh, weekends were the problem, so I can check in with her tomorrow.
Perfect. Oh, yeah, she, she had said they do that anyway, so, um, I think it's a question of. Communicating that to the public. Um, and all of this is predicated on it, we're gonna have to. Put out a communications campaign about this, what'll be discussed, why people should attend. And, um, and, uh, the availability of rides and. Uh, and kids activities. Is there anything I'm forgetting?
So six-thirty on the twenty-seventh?
Six-thirty on the twenty-seventh, yeah. Yes.
Down high school?
Using during the day, that's.
Okay, um, we need to vote on this, so, um, do I hear a motion?
Be the motion that we pull.
Wait. I keep holding this to you.
I know, we should.
I make a motion that we hold town meeting at six-thirty PM on October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five in the Belcher Town High School auditorium. Special town, I make a motion that we hold a special town meeting at six-thirty PM on October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five at the Belcher Town High School auditorium.
Second, second.
Hearing none? All favor?
Aye.
All right, agenda item five is to set a deadline for warrant articles for the special town meeting. I was thinking, uh, a week should be sufficient. Um, we could potentially discuss any submissions on the meeting of the fifteenth, but I'd be bringing them with me that night. Um, due to the condensed nature of what we're trying to do, I think that would be more than appropriate. A meeting with department heads tomorrow, I can spread the word. Um, that if they have any pending issues that need to be addressed at a special town meeting, I would entertain bringing them in front of the select board. I could set a deadline for the submission of warrant articles to be nine AM on September fifteenth. And we can have that discussion at the meeting.
And so. Committee for us to have a separate meeting and on each one of these warrant articles, so we wanna make sure that we factor time in for that, number one, and number two. Uh, what other types of warrant articles will we be considering? Do we have any idea of any of this? Um, we don't have any money left.
That, there, I, and I'm not sure, um, giving a week is gonna be enough time.
Cause the time, the finance committee also has to then convene and vote on the warrant articles and I'm still not sure of what other warrant articles would have any financial. Presentation at a meeting such as this.
So there may be some non-financial matters that need to be addressed, um, we do have the building that we potentially will surplus, um, we have a bylaw that may need to be passed. We could, um, extend that two weeks, um, we could go to the nineteenth or even the morning of the twenty-second. Um, but that may require a special meeting of the select board to approve warrant articles, so we can have the, uh, um, town council review and publishing of the warrant in time.
September, September twenty-second, because then the finance committee would have to meet. Like maybe the twenty-third or.
Or thirtieth, maybe.
And that's gonna be too, that's gonna be too soon, it's not gonna be done.
Like we have to get it boom, boom. But there is, is there, do you have any idea of any additional financial asks that would be? Okay, good.
No, at, at this point, we're not aware of any additional financial articles, it would just be some housekeeping and, and, um, bylaw changes. If the select board's willing to schedule a special meeting, um, to be determined, we could push this out two weeks, I have no issues with that.
I tend to find that the finance committee is pretty flexible, stop me if I'm wrong, um, but we'll try to accommodate to get together. Um, as soon as they're able to be presented to us, the ones with financial components, which would be this one that we're talking about more than anything. Hopefully there are no others with financial component.
And how soon would we get those warrants after you've collected them? Wait, several days, a week?
As soon as the, as soon as the select board votes on them, like the next morning, we can have them.
Okay.
They just won't be written up and they won't be.
This is like, they were, uh, willing to have to be pretty, yet another. Meeting, uh, on the twenty-second.
Nobody will have the.
Why, aren't you saying the twenty-second?
Or even maybe possibly the twenty-ninth, I'm not sure.
If it's the twenty-ninth, we already have a meeting and, but does that put you in a jam?
Why don't we leave the, the special select board meeting open-ended until I get some further direction? I, I'm, I'm comfortable allowing department heads to submit warrant articles up to the twenty-second. I just don't know yet when the board would have to meet.
Will you know by the fifteenth?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll discuss it as part of our next meeting.
So is the board willing to allow warrant articles to be submitted up to the twenty-second?
If, well, yes. Um, I think it, I, I don't know, because I mean, what, what I'm trying to do is honestly, if possible, not meet every Monday night all month long. Um, and as it is, if we do that, we'll be meeting every Monday night. If the board is okay with that.
So the regular schedule at a select board is first and third Mondays, um, so that September first, September fifteenth, we would not be meeting on the twenty-ninth. Um, and we would not be meeting on the twenty-second. This is one of those odd months where we have three weeks between meetings. So the twenty-second or the twenty-ninth would be a, a, a special meeting. Um, I would propose that we, um, unless something changes, but if we allow submissions up to the morning of the twenty-second, um, we potentially could um, meet that evening if necessary. If not, then I would propose the twenty-ninth.
Are we, uh, can we be flexible?
Yeah.
We can be flexible.
I will have additional information for Monday to fifteenth, so we can solidify our schedules.
If there's nothing left to talk about?
Super quickly. Is there any?
The deadline for what?
Just super quickly, is you pen and other questions? Should we set a date for a tribe board meeting in October or November? So it's on the books for all of us.
Absolutely. But do we wanna wait and to set that meeting, or are you saying do it right now?
Does it do better with this many people for it to do a doodle poll, like Melissa does? Just have Melissa send out a doodle poll?
I think that's the best way to do it. Okay, so, okay, but wouldn't Melissa put out a doodle? Okay. Okay, um, then, uh, I, do I hear a, uh, a motion to adjourn? Oh.
We need a motion to, uh, set the deadline for warrant articles, uh, of September twenty-second, um,
Yes.
nine A M.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion that we set the deadline for the special town meeting warrant articles for September twenty-second at nine A M.
I second that motion.
Further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so time to say goodnight, Grace. Hey, I'm gonna make a motion, we adjourn. Uh, all in favor, say aye. School committee's out at eight oh three.
Finance committee, you have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Couple seconds? All in favor? Eight oh three, we're out.
Select board motion to adjourn?
Two seconds, all in favor?